Formally advised that as required by Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, August 17, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend in access, remote access provided on the meeting agenda, posted on the town website, www.yarmouth MA.us, under the Agenda and Minutes tab by selecting Planning Board. I'll begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin, Susan Britta, Will Rubenstein.
I'm here.
Chris Vincent.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Present.
Joanne Crowley. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'll now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation during the public comment period or public hearings, my discretion, I'll invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the Raise Hand button to notify me. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and free, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On our agenda tonight is one item, in particular zoning amendments for a special town meeting, which will be held this fall. Included in our agenda materials is an item on a possible, on possible VCOD Village Center Overlay District housekeeping zoning amendments for the fall special town meeting. Special regulations regarding VCODs are covered in Section 414 of the Yarmouth Zoning Bylaw. Although we were not planning to have zoning amendments at this particular special town meeting, the Parker's River Riverwalk Park design, which will be developed under the VCOD as a municipal recreation, has encountered some issues. And Kathy Williams has prepared, as well with Mark Grilles, our Building Commissioner, notes to us this evening for us to discuss possible amendments to the VCOD. So I'll turn the discussion over to Kathy and Mark as appropriate.
Thank you, everyone, for having a meeting. I know we were hoping maybe not to have this meeting in August. But as Joanne was saying, the VCOD has been in place since 2012, and it kind of runs along Route 28 from Winslow Gray Road down to Lyman Lane here, next to Town Hall, along Route 28. And we've only had a handful of projects that have actually gone through the VCOD. So we haven't had a lot of projects to vet the good, the bad, and the ugly with regard to the bylaw that was adopted. We also have FEMA flood maps that were revised in 2014. And also, there's been building code changes that talk about the differences in design bait, design flood elevations that are needed. And there's also a situation where not all projects, like the Riverwalk Park and the municipal pump station, that's also going to be on that property, not all projects are commercial. And the bylaw is very heavily written as though it's a commercial development. So when we were kind of looking through the Riverwalk Park and I could just kind of show you really briefly the project, we have a restroom, which I think the restroom and the park itself on the majority is going to be fine. The issue that we have is one particular section of the bylaw related to building height. And it's going to be an issue with regard to the pump station that's going to be located along Route 28. The elevation there is, you know, maybe about six to seven. But because it's a critical facility in a flood elevation, in a base flood elevation of 11, it needs to be three feet above that. So we're going from like six or seven up to a floor elevation of 14. So there's a little bit of an issue with that. But there's also a very specific section in the bylaw, a note under building height. And I can show people, so people at home can see this, that basically says that no lot may be filled to a height greater than four feet. And that might make sense in typical lots. But the issue that we have here is obviously we're in a floodplain, and we have to meet building code, and we have to meet the code requirements for critical facilities. So we would be filling more than four feet for the pump station. So this being in here, if we're developing the Riverwalk Park using the VCOD, we'd need to develop the pump station using the VCOD. And this would actually require a variance for the pump station, which doesn't make any sense at all. There is already a section in the zoning bylaw, Section 302.1, that says fill of five feet or more requires a permit from the Building Commissioner. So one simple way of addressing this issue in the VCOD is just to reference it back to this section and just say, "Fill in excess of four feet, as measured from the natural grade at the street, shall require a permit from the Building Commissioner per Section 302.1 of the bylaw." Relatively simple edit, but it takes a good project like the pump station and doesn't require it to get a variance under the Village Center Overlay District. I don't know if you want to talk about each one individually?
I'd like to do that. Because I do have some questions. But we'll start with anyone else who has any questions on this particular 414.6.1 building height.
So just as a, if I can just jump in, just as a general understanding, if I'm a property owner and I'm in the flood zone and I want, and I need to raise the building five feet, I would have to go in front of the Building Commissioner for his permission? Or is that a, would that come to, who would that go to?
If you're in the VCOD, it would be a variance. If you're developing under the underlying zoning, you would need to get a permit from the Building Commissioner. And he only does it for five feet. So, and you may require the applicant for such a permit to furnish plans or specifications containing provisions or conditions or limitations, kind of looking at dust, erosion, silting, or other instability, and kind of seeing, is this raising causing stormwater problems on other people's properties? That's why that's in there, to make sure that you're not causing problems for other people.
But the ultimate decision maker would be the Board of Appeals, or Building Commissioner?
It would be the Building Commissioner for 302.1.
Right.
If you're in the VCOD and you wanted to fill five feet, it would be a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
That's current.
Current, correct.
So I'm not changing that at all. We're just adding the ability for Mark to grant a permit, as Jim said, for all other opportunities that may be in the flood zone. Is that correct?
Well, this is only related to the Village Center Overlay District, and it's taking out the requirement that you can't fill more than four feet. It's saying, if you are going to fill more than four feet, just do what everybody else has to do, which is go to Mark and get a building permit. And this is kind of puts everything back into what everyone else has to do. I'm not really quite sure why this was put in, but...
I think I'm the only member of this board that was, I was the chairman of that committee that did the whole VCOD. So we knew that we were going to, as it, people came to develop before it, find the glitches. So that's good. We found one.
I have a question. It's, maybe it's just semantical. But the 302.1 talks about fill, and it talks about depth. And when I read that, I thought that someone's, someone's got this piece of property, and it goes here. And then there's a ditch. And the ditch can't be more than four feet to fill it in.
The way it's written right now in the VCOD...
The word depth confused me. It felt like it was a hole, and that you can't have a hole in excess of five feet. This is, I'm here, and I want to go up four feet. This isn't a ditch.
Right, was always to prevent mounding. So if you're in a flood zone, you can't just bring in a 10 feet of fill to bring it in so that your property now is 10 feet above everybody else around you, like a molehill.
Yep.
And then you put your building on top of that, because that would look ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of the reason that was...
So you could fill in six feet of depth to get to road grade, and then you could go above that?
No.
You'd still have the divot?
You'd need the permit from him.
So the word depth in 302-1 is really not a ditch.
It's the depth of the fill that you're putting, the height of the fill.
It's the height of the fill.
From the measure at a certain particular point.
Okay, all right.
Average natural grade at the street is what we're talking about.
That's what it is in the Village Center Overlay.
Okay.
So if you had a natural, average natural grade on your property was at the height of the street, and you happen to have a little ditch in there, you could fill that up, because you're not going above the natural grade of the street.
Okay.
So you can do that. It's when you start piling up above that that comes a problem.
Okay. Mr. Grilles.
Mark Grilles, Building Commissioner. The question about filling a ditch, I would have to review each application before they did it, because that may be a swale. It may be there on purpose. So I don't want them to fill a swale, which would just cause flooding to the rest of the neighborhood. So, you know, when you, I think leaving a general like that makes people say, oh, let's go talk to the Building Commissioner. And that gives me the opportunity to review it and make a call on it. It's not the whole entire lot. Although I think the only three permits that I've had for that has been to fill the entire lot with five, with five feet of fill. So one guy got caught after the fact. But, yeah, that cost him a few bucks. His lawyer actually was the one that lived next door, so.
It's not better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
It took him a while.
It depends how much forgiveness costs.
It was a lot more costly when the engineers had to figure out how to fix it, so.
All right. So I, again, my, I think it was semantical. I'm thinking of depth and height as being two different things. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Chris, for that clarification. Any other comments on this? Mark, do you want to add anything else for us to understand? And Will, we haven't forgotten about you. I'm sorry.
I sometimes forget about remotes.
Oh, Will.
Anything?
I'm not, I'm willing to speak up when motivated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I've known you to do so in the past. Thank you. So your suggestion for this first draft of this amendment that we might see, and it would be at our next meeting, I presume, would be as we see it here?
Correct.
Okay.
In red.
Yes, this is exactly like a red line of that, of that No. A, of how it would be. We'd get out of the no lot, maybe fill to a height greater, and just say, "Fill in excess of four feet, as measured from natural grade at the street, which is in there already, shall require a permit from the Building Commissioner per Section 302.1 of the bylaw."
Okay, and so up to four feet there on their own. They can do it. And there's no way that that can be manipulated? Is that in, is there any way that can be abused, Mark, in any?
Any projects that are going to be doing that are going to get a building permit, so we review the site plan anyway.
Okay.
But if they're going to go beyond that, then they'd have to provide me with additional information in order for me to issue a permit.
And if they are developing under the VCOD, there's the VCOD Site Plan Review Process. You guys would see it.
Okay. Yes, yes, Mr. Saban.
So, four feet. How do we arrive at that number? Not six feet, not two feet? How do we come up with four feet? Is that a...
Anybody remember? I had the same question.
That was back in the VCOD days.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you exactly how. I think it's just the whole mounding.
It's about the height, it's about this height, right, when you say?
A little bit more taller.
A little bit taller.
The thing that's important to note is how much you fill the site in the VCOD does not impact your ability to go up higher.
Right, right.
Because that's based on the average natural grade at the street side of the foundation. So even if you're down here and you fill four feet, you're still measuring from here to your, to the height.
Okay.
So you can't add on and add on.
So the number four feet was just a number based upon what the committee felt was aesthetically an appropriate number without getting too high or too low?
I guess.
I recall, yeah, because we had a lot of consultants that worked on that with us. And, yeah, I think it's exactly right what you said, Jim.
I mean, you could match it to say five feet, which is the same as 302.1. But I thought we didn't want to add, make too many changes. We just want to have that extra ability to actually do it without a variance. Because this will, this will be important for the pump station, the municipal pump station.
This is primarily for the pump station, right?
But it also impacts everybody who's in a floodplain. And if you can take a look at, you know, this is...
A lot of it around Parker's River.
Yes, everything that's in this kind of beige-y color. This is the Parker's River right here. So everything all the way over here, almost to the Irish Village, and everything over here, doesn't get quite to Winslow Gray. But all of those are in the floodplain. So all of these people would be impacted and have to meet a lot of other regulations in addition to getting Conservation Commission review, as Jim knows, and, you know, going through the VCOD. So there's a lot of mechanisms that people are being reviewed for. But we don't want to create a roadblock for someone through a kind of almost a throwaway comment from, you know, a while ago, when we didn't realize the full implications. And things have changed. The base flood elevations are higher now, based on the 2014. And the building code is, you have to be one foot above the base flood elevation for your design elevation in a floodplain. So things have changed and made it a little bit more complicated.
And this would make the bylaw a bit more friendly?
Yes.
Okay. That's the important thing.
Yes. Everything here, the intent is to make the bylaw more friendly, more flexible, and not quite as strict and rigid. If you read through the bylaw, even, you know, as Mark and I, people who are, you know, kind of regulating it for people who come and developers who come and visit us, there's a lot of stuff in there that could really be cut back, I think. But I think what we're doing here is we're doing it in a slightly different way of giving flexibility that allows you guys to look at a project holistically and determine whether, yeah, it makes sense to design it this way. I know we had some issues with the Irish Village. I think you guys were comfortable with some, some things that were happening there. But unfortunately, they were, and strict adherence to the VCOD required a variance. And then they ended up having to go, go back and redesign it to have fewer variances. But they ended up still needing variances to have that project move forward. So this would hopefully kind of eliminate some of them. Not that particular one, but some of the other ones that we're going to be talking about.
I have just one comment as a grammatical thing. On page, on the second page, in the, in the red, it says, "It will not substantially derogate from the intent or purpose." I'm not familiar with that word. Did you mean deviate or...
Derogate, actually, that's a standard comment. You'll see that it's actually a word that's used in the bylaw a lot. So it's not really, it's the same meaning, but it just seems to be more of a legal term that's used throughout the bylaw. I kind of copied it from some other sections of the bylaw.
I had to look it up.
Yeah. I missed that one, am I?
Okay, so any other comment on Section 414.6.1? Okay, we're in agreement.
So I'll work that up.
The draft will appear as you recommend, Kathy. So the next section on the Table of Dimensional Requirements.
Yeah, so it's kind of a similar situation in the Village Center Overlay and everything but the VC2. We really were talking about making village centers and moving the buildings closer to the, to the road and engage that streetscape. So we have a minimum setback and a maximum setback in VC1, 3, and 4. In VC1, the minimum is 15 feet and a maximum of 20 feet. But for projects, and again, the pump station or other projects that are in a FEMA flood zones, there's really larger grade changes that are happening between the edge of the sidewalk and going up here. So, for example, in the pump station, we're going from probably like seven up to 14. And we're trying to do that. It's not even 20 feet that we have, because we have to have a little area of six feet for sidewalk, future sidewalk going in there. So they're trying to make up all of that grade change in 15 feet. And it's somewhat difficult. They're trying to be creative in different ways. But it also doesn't make the building look as nice as they might be able to if they could push it back just a tiny little bit. They have a lot of other problems, a very tight area, because there's an isolated wetland. We have our entrance to the Riverwalk Park. They're trying to cram a lot in, into this relatively small area. So I was just wondering if the board might consider allowing for a maximum front yard setback to be like 25 in the VC1 for properties located in a FEMA flood zone. Again, taking a consideration for properties in a flood zone. It's 25, I think, in the other districts. It was just 20 in the VC1.
And this would just be an adjustment to the, to the numbers in the table?
I think it might be.
Is there any language associated with this?
It would end up being a note that would go next to the, the front yard setback maximum. And it would just basically say, except, you know, 25 feet in VC1 for properties located in a FEMA flood zone.
So it would be, it would be clearly distinguished as VC1 plus flood zone, right, Kathy? That would be in the note.
Exactly.
Okay. And that will take care of the pump station, correct?
I think it will help them and give them some flexibility.
Anything else that may, along there that may impact?
I think, again, it's like, we haven't had a lot of projects that have come forward to vet the bylaw. And the pump station is really vetting, doing work within a floodplain on steroids, because it does need to go up quite so high. Hopefully, other people don't have to be quite that high, because they don't need to be three feet above the base flood elevation, because they're not critical facilities, like a pump, municipal pump station. But it really brought into the, into focus that we need to do something to look at exceptions in the flood zone.
So there would be a note added to that?
Correct.
Okay.
And the note would highlight both VC1 plus floodplain?
Yes. That's where the note would apply to, and it would just go to, from 20 to 25 feet. Just so you know, the 25 feet maximum front yard setback already exists in the VC3 and the VC4. There's no maximum setback in the VC2, because that's more of the residential area. And that just has a minimum front back, front yard setback.
Any other comments on Table of Dimensional Requirements? Questions? Okay, so, good on that. Next, the VCOD Design Standards, Kathy.
And this is, and anything that I work up, I'm also going to run by Town Council, just to make sure that we're all kosher. But we have seen some flexibility being given in other sections of the bylaw for certain things. You guys, as the VCOD Site Plan Reviewers, you look at the pretty. How's it laid out? How does the site design work? What do the buildings look like? So you guys are really the ones that are kind of being the arbiter of that. There's a lot of, like, strict criteria that's given in here. So this little note here is kind of saying, okay, it's strict, but you guys are going to decide whether it, we can have some small little waivers or some small little changes that don't derogate from the intent or the purpose of the bylaw and still make it a great project, but doesn't require them to go to the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit or a variance, depending on what we're talking about. So the wording here is just to kind of add into the section under the, under the Design Standards that the Planning Board, through the VCOD Site Plan Review Process, may alter or waive one or more of the requirements of Section 414.8 and the Architectural and Site Design Standards if it finds that the alteration or waiver of the requirements will not substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. This is one that I kind of want Town Council to look at to make sure that we're not giving you authority that we shouldn't be giving you.
Can I ask the question?
Sure.
Kathy, is there any reason why these things are always written in the negative? Where it says, like, "will not substantially detract", as opposed to saying, "if the alteration or waiver of the requirements substantially meets the intent or purpose of the bylaw"? Is there a reason why it's always written in the negative?
I don't know.
Because I think it would be better to say it in a positive manner, that the Planning Board, through, "may alter or waive if the alteration or waiver of requirements substantially meets the intent or purpose of..." And I would change or to and, by the way. But I think it's easier to understand as opposed to say it in the negative. I'm also always concerned when you have terms like substantial and substantially, because that's such a personal term. Ultimately, substantially is decided by the board, you know, whether it's... But, but when you have a term, it's so personal like that. The only way you could get around that would be to say, maybe the vote's got to be a supermajority or something like that, if we are going to waive design standards. Because these design standards have been vetted by two other groups. So I don't know whether we might want to consider, one, saying it in the positive, and two, maybe having a supermajority vote, just to show...
I think once Town Council takes a look at it, we'll get some good guidance from Town Council.
Yeah, the VCOD Site Plan Review Process is kind of a bit of an anomaly. It's not a special permit. You guys don't have, you know, public notification to a butters or anything like that. It's just a notice in a public meeting. So this might be something that might, Town Council might think this is a little too aggressive. You guys don't have the full, right. So I kind of want to have, have that vetted by, by Town Council. But I certainly think, I don't have any issues with changing from the negative wording to a more positive, yeah.
And then we do get his opinion on whether, if we decide to go forward with that, whether it adds some oomph to it to have a supermajority vote as opposed to a simple majority, whether that helps or hurts the deliberative process.
And if I may, the, kind of the purpose of the VCOD was because we're requiring so much that we didn't want to make it difficult like that, requiring a supermajority. So there was some flexibility there, because we're asking so much of the, of the development.
Well, and I agree. The only thing is, what we're doing with this, with this vote would be to change, override, or somehow impact work that's already been done by committees on the, on the, you know, the town committees. So I'm thinking maybe, I don't know. My personal belief would be, they've done a lot of work. If they don't, if they put forth A, and we decide, no, it's going to be A+, we should be able, one, to say, we think it's that important, we have a supermajority vote. But I agree with you, there's a lot on, but, but our obligation is not to the developer. I mean, my obligation is to the other people who've worked on this and what the town is trying to do. So, it's just a thought. The Town Council may say it's not necessarily, they may say it's a great idea. It's just a thought.
I think the, the way it's listed for, that it's, right now, it's a majority vote. But I think that's in the rules and regulations governing you guys. So that would be something that would be half, it wouldn't necessarily be something that goes in the bylaw. It would have to be something that goes into...
Someplace else, yeah. I just think if you're going to override something that's already been done by town committees, we better give it a lot of thought. And it should be a proponents of...
And it might be worded...
Members that think it's worth it.
It might be worded differently,[1529.96] It might be worded differently that you guys determine whether something substantially adheres to it and you guys decide. There's just some real specific things and there's so many things that don't necessarily, we were reviewing for a pump station, that doesn't apply to a pump station. You know, so how do you? How do you, what flexibility do you have to say that doesn't apply to a pump station, you know?
This sort of came up when we were doing the J mark thing on Route 28, the whole issue of how it looked and how it was placed on the site. Generally, the sentiment of the committee or the board was, wasn't all that great. The buildings themselves weren't too bad. But the overall approach didn't meet what we thought was a good standard for Route 28. So if that had come to us with every board saying this is fabulous, go ahead and do it. And we're sitting here saying, I don't know if that's such a good idea. Maybe that's the kind of thing I'm thinking. If we're going to do that, at least send the signal back, we'll, we'll do it, you know?
I, I think I'd just like to clarify, there was no general opinion of the board. We just raised a lot of questions that raised those issues and that the proposal was withdrawn without prejudice. But you're right, that viewing that we took, we did, we did raise a lot of questions. Mark, you had a question or a comment?
My comment was more to the, to the process, the way that the permitting processes work in town and then including the VCOD. So the design review committee, which is not you guys, you guys are separate. That's an advisory committee. They make comments. They, you know, they want guy, they want to give advice, you know? You know, the town might be more amenable to this. My site plan review is regulatory. So everything that is discussed at our hearing, at our meeting, we just had one yesterday, is regulatory. Neither one of those meetings are public. Your, your VCOD review is a public review. It's, I don't know.
Design review is a public committee and that's a public meeting.
That's a public meeting.
And, and they have no, you know, minutes and everything.
Do they allow public comment?
Certain, certain situations, you are not just giving advice, you are making a determination. It's limited to certain projects. Vast majority of the projects they see are just commercial development south of Route six, which is just advisory only.
We don't get many people in the design review committee meetings.
Oh, who come?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The public generally doesn't.
Every, it's, it's not like a situation where you have to do a butter notification. It's simply 48 hours open meeting law requirement. If someone's particularly interested in a project, we've had a few over the years, people come to talk.
I think that by the time it gets to your site plan interview, you have all the regulations spelled out on the document from the site plan review committee. So you guys are making judgment on the plan that's ahead of you and how close is it to the regulation? Is, does it sub- substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw? That's what you're looking for.
Yeah, yes.
Just a mic, two cents worth. I really have no problem with overriding other committees. You know, site plan review is for the greater part advisory and you know, under the road bylaw, we get the final say. Site plan review gave some recommendations. Some of us liked and some of us didn't like. But it's our authority in the end and, and kind of greedy. I don't want to give any authority away that we don't have to. And it's, and it's okay to override another committee. We will override the opinions of the building inspector if we don't agree with him and we can appeal to the zoning board of appeals on, on some of his decisions should we not agree. So I'm okay with that.
Site plan interview is really, like, I'm not giving opinion. The only thing I provide is here's what the fa, here's what you gave me. Here's what the regulations say in relation to your plan. That's all that we say. So I'm not giving advice on, on building height, on design or any of that stuff. So, you know, for instance, the board of appeals overturns my decision frequently enough. It doesn't faze me. It doesn't matter to me. It's another board that does that. That's their job. They can see the gray. I'm aware as a regulatory authority, we're black and white and that's all we can see. We can't see gray where, where those boards can. So we're never offended by it.
You know, the, like, the road bylaw, it doesn't require them to meet fully the architectural and site design standards. It's, it's.
Substantially.
Yes. And, and right here, I'm just looking at this. I mean, you, it says here, standards shall be mandatory for all VCOD projects. Maybe that's a place that could be softened as well. If, if, if town council has some issues with some, some of this, this language. I'm just trying to add some flexibility because, you know, there's certain things, there's certain design standards you guys aren't going to ever give away. Parking in the front, no, thank you. Move along, you know? I mean, a box building, no, thank you. Move along. And I don't think anybody would really be presenting that to you if, if they're going to go to all the time and effort to develop a VCOD project. Well, they, they'd be very disappointed, I think. And most, most people are trying to meet the regulations. But there's just certain places where, oh, you know, my, I have one parking space that's five feet over and I need that space and I don't have another, you know? Nope, parking to the side of the rear, you know, it's, it's so rigid that you can't have any flexibility for, for minor changes. I don't think anything substantial you should be, ever be giving away because the bylaw was very thoughtfully developed for, for a variety of reasons, but every site's a little bit unique and there might be a little bit of tweaking that would be warranted and the board would feel that it's warranted.
Okay.
Adam Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Kathy just mentioned maybe changing the bylaw to allow a waiver from some of the architectural and site design standards. That sentence that we wrote very clearly says that may alter or waive one or more of the requirements of section 414 and the architectural and site design standards. So it's covered in that one sentence. So I don't think you need to add, in my opinion, you don't need to add any more language. I don't take some of it away, but.
On that, that's a good segue to my, my, my question on this. The, the section 4148 is the umbrella statement for this section, 4148. And then you've identified five speci, four, speci, five, specific subsets of that. Sidewalks, entranceways, dormers, roofline buffers.
Yep.
Are why do we need those if we're, we've got kind of an umbrella policy in the first one? Or are these ones that just really need to be adjusted because they're not good?
I think they need to be adjusted because they inherently have some difficulties.
Some issues. Okay. And so that's a, it's, it's a really a correction of, you know, based on experience. I mean, the sidewalks in particular, we went through, if I remember, at the Irish Village. Aren't they going to have two sidewalks? At some point? So.
Yeah. So, so that's, that's another issue that has caused.
So you, you've identified within the general design standards, some specifics that you want to drill down on and make specific adjustments right now.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, and again, I don't know how you would feel about all of these either. You may say, no, we don't want that.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. But go ahead, Kathy. I interrupted you.
Oh, no, no.
Sidewalks.
So, yeah, sidewalks. We all know, we've, we've had this conversation about sidewalks before. The, the section for, for sidewalks is very specific. You know, distinct surfaces stamped concrete, pavers, arcades, colonnades. It also requires, again, have six foot sidewalk along Route 28. So it could be a paved sidewalk next to this fancy sidewalk. What, what are we doing? The Irish Village ended up getting a permission or, or waiver to give us a, a easement for, for, for that. So that when, the whole idea was when Mass DOT came in later and fixed everything for us, that we would kind of have this ability to say, okay, this was a VCOD project. So it's all been designed to accommodate, understanding you're going to be extending that's maybe a sidewalk six feet into our property. And what I'm trying to do with the change here is identify that we want to have clear pedestrian pathways provided between buildings, obviously, from the development to public ways and, and across automobile driveways. And then all VCOD design shall take into consideration future expansion of sidewalks along Route 28 and include a location for a six foot wide sidewalk along the entire frontage of the property abutting Route 28. That concept is, is don't plant your trees two feet off the existing sidewalk because we want you to plant them back far enough in your buffer so that when Mass DOT comes through and wants to put a sidewalk in, they, they, you, you, you don't have to lose all your nicely planted trees. That's, that's the thought process here. And Jim has a very interesting expression on his face.
I'm just thinking back and when we had a Yometh Economic Revitalization Committee who wanted to plant trees along Route 28.
Trees are good. They're good and we want to keep them. And the other thing is, is you know that Mass DOT is coming through with a resurfacing project from Parker's River to the Barnstable line. They're not putting in stamped concrete. They're going to put in pavement and they're going to have a granite curb and lots of the things that they're looking at now are going to come and, and, and address a lot of these issues, at least from the Parker's River to, to the Barnstable Town Line. So our bylaw says you have to have stamped concrete when they're going to come in and do HMA. So it's a huge conflict and it is always creates grief for every developer who's, who's ever come before us. So I was trying to lessen that, but still say, design around the fact that you're probably going to have an expansion of the right of way at some point.
I'll go back to, because again, I was on, to help develop this whole thing. I remember this about the sidewalks and the the joke always was the first person that develops under the VCOD is the one that's going to determine what the sidewalks look like because it's your neighbors that have to make it look like yours. So we wanted consistency. We didn't want stamped concrete, something else, then bricks, and then asphalt, and then stamped concrete, and then gravel because that doesn't look good. So that was the intent was do stamp concrete. Yeah. If you're the first guy, then the next guy next to you has to do it and do it. So it's consistent throughout. So I got no problem changing it as far as, I just want it to be consistent throughout the properties. And if Mass DOT is the one that's going to say that it's going to be asphalt.
It's really a streetscape project, you know, and it just, it feels a little overreaching. I understand the point of it and I'm not really sure whether we can ask people to give us an easement. But at least design around it and accommodate the fact that you're going to, there may be doing this in the future. It, you know, the, the pump station is a perfect example. You know, there's, right now they have a shared use pathway on that side and it runs right in front of the pump station. So they, again, they have to start their grading behind that and then go up. But it's not going to be stamped. It just makes no sense to put in stamped concrete, concrete or put in a sidewalk of any sort when we know Mass DOT is coming.
Not going to do the same thing. Kathy, is there any language that would be stronger than shall take into consideration? Is there anything that would be a little bit, that way you make sure that the consistency that Chris talked about is.
Shall accommodate or.
Primary, I don't know, maybe the council can suggest something. Shall take into consideration, you know, someone's going to sit here and say, I did it and it didn't work. So I'd like to have the board, if there's something that the board can hang its head on, it would make it a little stronger. I think that would be better for us. And, and get to the consistency that Chris is talking about.
It does say up in the, the first paragraphs, the developer has to provide a minimum six foot wide sidewalk.
Right.
Right? So they gotta, they gotta have one. That was the intent is to make sure that there were sidewalks on Route 28.
Right.
This would go, I'm sorry, this is what's there now. I'm saying get rid of all of that and then this would be replace it, this shorter version of this.
But I'm, I'd, I'd like to keep the.
Six foot.
They have to have a minimum six foot wide sidewalk, whether they put it in at the time they redevelop or later when Mass DOT comes through, right? So they've got to, that's, if we don't say that they have to have one, they won't put one in. And then you're going to have, maybe somebody has a sidewalk and then you have a development that doesn't have a sidewalk. Because we're not saying that they have to have it.
So are you saying they have to put in the six foot sidewalk?
I'm not saying they, well, yeah, they should because when they redevelop it, they should put it in. But again, we want consistency. So if Mass DOT is going to be doing a certain thing and that's what Mass DOT does, then we should say that it has to conform to the Mass DOT standards or something like that. But they got to have that sidewalk.
So you could just add that, that sentence that Chris mentioned, the developer shall provide a minimum six, and then continue with, you know, in addition, clear pedestrian pathways shall be divided between buildings from the development, blah, blah, but set the standard first, which is the six foot wide sidewalk and then go on to explain it a little bit in depth.
So you want them to construct a sidewalk next to, next to the sidewalk?
No, 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 no.
When they redevelop.
One next, next to one.
Well, if there's, say I'm developing a project right now and the, the paved sidewalk runs in front of my property already. And it's five foot, whatever. It's a Mass DOT sidewalk. So then I have to do a six foot on the others.
No, 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 no. That's the sidewalk. Because you got a sidewalk there already.
If you don't have a sidewalk, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So you want to add something that says if no sidewalk exists, you have to, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. It doesn't.
Adam Chairman?
Yes.
So I kind of understand what we're trying to achieve here. But I've always had a problem with making the private sector do more than the public sector. And if our lovely government is going to come in and put paved sidewalks in or brick sidewalks or whatever they decide to do, we should not require anybody to develop something any more significant than what they are doing.
Exactly. That's, that's what I was just saying too.
So any reference to what types of materials are being used is kind of, you know, doing just that, saying, hey, you have to have this. I know we're trying to get everybody to look the same. And I'll tell you from, and as many of us who built and developed things, the dollar dictates. And if I'm going to be able to put a driveway in that's paved for, you know, 200 bucks a foot, I'm going to do that before I'm going to put a brick driveway in that's 800 bucks a foot. So architecturally, they're going to throw things out that are minor to them and driveways are minor. So I think when we structure this, we need to make sure that A, we're, I, I agree that we need to require that future development would require the placement of a sidewalk, but in a way that it's not more restrictive than our government would already do. And how you word that, I don't know, but that's just kind of my thought.
Well, you could say instead of such as stamped concrete, you say, for example, stamped concrete. And that way it's just being laid out as an example and not a requirement.
Mass DOT is always going to go granite curb, paved sidewalk. That's their standard. And that's, that's the, going to be the, the go-to for any developer unless you say something different. The most I think a developer might do would be concrete. But that has more maintenance issues sometimes than, than the pavement. I think, I think if you don't say anything about, about it, you're going to get the match of the Mass DOT, which is the pavement.
It's the easiest one to, to reach and probably the cheapest.
So I think your points.
The intent is sidewalks continuous along properties and that we want it to look the same.
And contiguous.
And if it's Mass DOT, then sure, then that's great.
If the lowest common denominator, we're going to get them.
Absolutely.
As long as they match up.
As long as they match.
So why not? So we'll have DOT be the standard, kind of. They're going to do it. They own it. They're going to do it on both sides.
We can put in there.
Pretty much when they do the redevelopment, sidewalks on both sides, yeah.
Well, they'll have a shared use pathway. So it sounds like maybe a stronger word to accommodate, like if you, if there's already a sidewalk in front of you, we want you to still accommodate a future expansion of the right of way that might come onto your property again, so that you're not planting or planting.
Tell people that?
You do.
Yes.
You really do.
Yeah, you do.
You really do.
Or they won't do it.
You really do. I wish you didn't.
Better tell them at the front before they have to cut down a tree later on or rework something later on that's going to cause them more expense if they know from the start, we're saving them money in the long run.
Or you have a nice beautiful tree that they cut down and then they plant a little three inch caliper, which, you know, takes a long time to grow. And then we'll add in something that if, if there's no sidewalk in front of your property, then you have to put a six foot sidewalk along. That makes perfect sense. Excellent.
If you do a visual drive down 28 and see, you can kind of visualize.
There's gaps for sure.
Where some of those spots would.
Right.
There are gaps for sure. All right. I like that.
Entranceways, next. Sorry, section.
There we go. And this is a case where some, some of the things that are being stated are really related to commercial projects, people who have big windows or wants to display something. Obviously the pump station doesn't want to display anything. You know, having a front entrance, you know, that might make sense because as you're driving down Route 25, you want that building to relate to the street. So, okay. No one's going to go in that front entrance because it's a pump station. You're not going to have the public going in at all. But I can kind of see why we want to have the, the front entrance speak to the street. But there's a section here with regard to street level frontage shall be primarily devoted to entrances, shop windows or other displays. There's other places where we frequently say for things that really mean for commercial, we say for commercial uses. And that's all this is doing is adding in that for commercial uses, this is what you want. So that we don't get into a situation where we're like, well, that, Mark's saying, well, you need to have this. Like, no, it's, it doesn't apply to a pump station, but it's in the bylaw and it gets a little confusing.
So what Kathy, what is the, what's the rationale behind this, the seating and trash receptacles? We are talking about entrances, right? Commercial use. And then it says street level frontage that incorporates setback areas beyond the minimum.
Right. There's a.
Shall incorporate seating and I'm particularly concerned about the trash recept, but I don't even understand why this is in here. What is the rationale behind this?
I think, I think a down, think of a downtown main street where people just have those fancy trash receptacles where people can put stuff. This so it's more of a, for a downtown, main town area versus like, you're not going to have like a trash receptacle next to the pump station.
But is this, is this currently?
That's the way it's written now. Yeah.
It is? Be a minimum.
So that, you know, if you're setback, you can have a little bench for the public to sit, someplace to put their trash. Think, think of a downtown area, think of downtown Hyannis. I'm sure they have similar situations for.
Yeah. And I tell you, yes, that's true. And most of those trash receptacles are overflowing and look lousy. So I'm, I love the idea of seating. I like the idea of the benches and probably receptacles because you're right, people might want to sit outside and have lunch or something, but I guess it's, I just, I don't know. They have to be emptied every day or something.
It's really trying to create a downtown. I'm, I'm not sure we'll truly get a downtown on, on Route 28. So a lot of these standards are to try and create that pedestrian feel along.
It does say to the extent practical. So that may apply to the, it may not be, it may not be the right place to put a trash receptacle, maybe between the seagulls or something. So, okay.
Why would we want to restrict this just to commercial?
I don't want to be required to do it for non-commercial prop, for projects.
Why not?
Do you want to have a devoted entrance and shop windows or other displays at a pump station? At the restroom? At public restrooms?
They don't have to be operate, you have the word with operable doors. They don't have to be, but aesthetically, if you're driving down 28 and you have that pump station that has.
We're not changing that part, Jim.
No, 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 I know. But what you're saying is this is only for commercial properties. Pump station isn't commercial property is what you're trying to get around.
What I'm saying is this particular requirement for shop windows or other displays are for commercial uses only. There's a section that requires, prior to that, that requires to have operable front doors that would remain.
That's a.
Yeah. All buildings will have a principal, right? All buildings will have a principal facade and entry with operable doors facing a street or other area dedicated to pedestrian circulation. So you might have a front one and a side one. That's all your parking. And then buildings may have more than one principal facade and or entry. So I think that having, having a presence on the street with a front door even for a pump station is appropriate. And we're still doing that. This is requiring the wind, shop windows and displays that I don't want to be required to do that for a pump station.
Or, or. You don't want to require for retail.
So really what you're trying to get at is shop windows and displays. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're right, Jim. I think you're right.
Because you know what I mean? I don't want to drive down 28 and just see this big wall because we don't.
Absolutely not.
That was the purpose of this is that you couldn't just have a whole brick facade along Route 28 and your entrance on the side. We want it to look nice. So you're going to be using that for windows for the displays.
So even when they build the pump station, I'm fine with them putting a fake door and fake windows in to make it look right.
They're definitely going to do that. That, that's not the issue. It's the, of having full size shop windows, those big windows and having for displays and stuff.
So if we took out the words shop windows and displays, would that be the same as for commercial use? Taking, adding commercial use, would you? Are we achieving, am I confusing myself here?
I, I'd get rid of three altogether then. I mean, I'm sorry that I'm not showing the.
I wouldn't get rid of it altogether because then you're going to get just a brick facade along the whole.
No, no, no. You, you, I'm sorry, but you still have, I can show you. You, you still have that other section, those other.
The other two sections to cover it.
Yeah. That's what I'm wondering, whether the other two sections don't.
And I don't want to get too complicated, but at the same time, we're trying to make sure we protect the aesthetics of the VCOD. So it's exactly what we're trying to achieve.
Right. So that it wouldn't be just a brick facade building. We want a door. We want some architectural treatment in the front. And you're saying it will have that.
It says entranceways. All buildings should have a principal facade and entry with operable doors facing a street or other area dedicated to pedestrian circulations. Buildings may have more than one principal facade and or. Buildings may have more than one principal facade and/or entry. Primary entrances not facing a street shall open onto sidewalks or other pedestrian features." So I've already told them, you're putting a front door in, and they have windows. I mean, they understand that, and they've been given this VCOD bylaw a long time ago. So I would never advocate for something that would create brick walls.
And I'm not, all my comment has nothing to do with anything specific, because things are gonna come on long after we're here and gone. So my question is, would it be easier to just take the word operable out of the operable door part? I'm trying to make it easy for you here, Kathy.
I, I don't-
No big deal?
The, the only thing that makes a door operable and not operable is locking it. I mean, I mean, they'll just lock the door, it will not be used, but it will still be, maybe an emergency egress for, for the pump station.
Yeah, so operable is open and close, whether it's locked or not, it's not an issue.
Right, but your, your comments from the beginning, Kathy, was that this, the language covering VCODs is heavily weighted towards commercial properties. And when we have something like a pump station, or something else along the way that's not commercial, why do we want to have to apply these kind of restrictions on design? And so what you're doing is just, I, I think, clarifying that, yeah, if it's a commercial building, you gotta have some windows, you gotta have some display.
Right.
If you're gonna put up a CVS, we want to see display windows.
And so do they, yeah.
And so, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with-
And the chair and trash receptacle.
But we're getting a large pushback for building residential developments along Route 28 more and more. So you want to make sure, whether it's commercial or residential, you don't get that. That look of a wall. I think what we're trying to make sure is we don't get the wall.
I don't think what's being proposed would give you the wall, ever.
Okay, so commercial or-
I mean, you could say, "as, as applicable, street-level frontage shall be primarily do-" I mean, I just, is there another way of getting it so that, you know, if it's not applicable, you don't have to have shop windows and displays? As applicable.
If we, if, if we all agree, and, and, and the very first one passes, Kathy, number three here in your memo, then we have the right to make an exception to this along the way.
Right, right.
If we get the umbrella on the very, the, the overriding design standard where we can waive these things.
Right.
But I, I think a clarification that for commercial use, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see, I don't see an issue with it, so.
I'm sure. Just for clarification.
Sure.
As Kathy said, entranceways, number one. So if I was to read this and interpret it as I'm reviewing a plan, number one clearly says, "all buildings shall have a principal facade and entry with operable doors." So every single building in the VCOD has to. Then I go to number two.
Yep.
And it tells me what I need to look for in number two. And number three, that's the one that Kathy's trying to clarify. So I, I, I think it's covered. I think just mentioning that for the commercial buildings, having the, you don't want resident, because I don't want to tell the person who's building a condo, oh yeah, you gotta have a shop window here, because that's what the bylaw says.
Right.
And I think that it, I think Kathy's clarified that section very well.
Use that pressure.
I think you'll see, like, in the next section for fenestrations, which are windows, you know, you'll see, "for commercial use, for commercial use, for commercial use, for commercial use." Understanding that for these types of uses, this is what we want to see, but not necessarily for, for everything.
Right.
Oh, I see, so I, I see, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at it right now, sure.
So she's clarifying, and making it consistent with other set of standards.
Yes, yep, okay.
Okay, I'm along.
You're on board? Jim Saban, I'm on board.
I got it.
There you go. That's just an easy thing. You have to remember, the VCOD was in three different parts. There was one, two, and three. The bookends were more commercial use. The middle part was more geared towards residential. That's why they're, they're all, the language is different between the three, and the second is more residential-oriented. So I think putting a commercial in there takes care of what you're, it's not municipal.
Yeah, we'll discuss it again. I mean, and if you guys really feel it's not needed. We'll have more information, hopefully, from town council on, on the first caveat there. Just want to make sure, entranceways. So the, another section is kind of similar, it has to do with, with dormers. Because the first paragraph says, "on long-pitched rooftops, dormers shall be used to break", it just says, "on pitched rooftops, dormers shall be used to break up roof surfaces." And this is really meant, okay, we're gonna have these, assuming we're having a really big building with a really long section, yeah, we want it broken up. But there's a lot of buildings, like the pump station, or even the restroom at the, at the Riverwalk Park, that doesn't have a long stretch of roof, and trying to stick a dormer on would actually look weird. So we were just kind of saying, is maybe for, if you have a long-pitched rooftop, you might want to put dormers in, or other architectural elements, like a cupola, or, or something. Or maybe it's a shed, or a shed dormer, or something. Not necessarily a dormer, doghouse dormer. So that's what that section is talking about with regard to, to dormers. Not every solution to a long-pitched roof is a dormer. And it's the way it's written now, it's like, yeah, you gotta do it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
What's long? Five feet, 50 feet, 100 feet? What's long?
I think it refers, you had to refer back to the architectural design standards, too, for this. Because that's the, that's kind of the governing thing when it comes to.
So I asked that question, is that the type of question somebody, Joe Bill, do I come in and it says, "long"? What's long, Mark?
Yeah, discretionary, right?
As Chris said, I'd have to refer to the architectural design standards and then make a call based on how, how much you have to break up the facade of the building. So if you have that long facade, what, I don't recall what the architectural design standards say for length of wall, before you have to have the five-foot. I don't remember what that number is, 50 feet?
50 feet.
I think it's 50 feet.
So we've already, we've already established that number.
Well, for the facade.
For modulation.
For modulation of the facade. So that would, I mean, if it were clear, that would be helpful, absolutely. But right now, I just wing it and call it 50 feet.
Or we could reference the design standard, you know, whatever the identifier is in the design standard, whatever paragraph it is, consistent with paragraph blah, 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 blah. Dormers or other architectural elements.
And again, I only ask this because I'm trying to make sure that these are not the types of questions he's gonna deal with later on.
I think there's a good question. Anything like that that needs clarification is a good one.
The problem with roof's line is it's all about the different type of roofline, you know, articulation. I mean, you have, may have a gable end that goes in, and, and cupolas or dormers. I just don't want you to be forced to have to put in a dormer because you have a pitched roofline. It may not make sense.
Well, what about dropping the word "long"?
Well, that's what she's adding.
I actually have a suggestion.
We don't have to. We can just say-
I would, may I make a suggestion, Madam Chair?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Grills?
For a large, I would say, on large roof lines, and then put in parentheses, 50 feet or more, you know, just add that number so that it mimics what's in the architectural design standard.
And you would also have the ability, if we said 50 feet or more, and somebody comes in and says, "look, I got this, it's 52," does that give you the ability to waive that? They'd have to go to-
No, you guys could waive it here, though, based on the language we changed earlier.
See, those are the type of things I would envision you guys giving relief on. Nothing wholehearted, but-
Yeah, we have to, we have to enforce it exactly as it's written. You guys on the deviation.
That they have to be, a minimum of that.
Yep.
What about architectural elements? Is that a defined term, Kathy?
No, it's, it's not.
So it's really, could be whatever the architect, could be a cupola, could be, okay. So that's a little-
Could be a cut into the roof with a, with a rubber roof and a railing.
It says "shall be," so they, you know, doesn't mean it has to be.
Yeah.
Same as.
Again, the intent is to break up the roof surfaces and make it look pretty.
Yeah.
And that's what the discretionary is on us.
If we don't think it's-
So we don't think that looks good.
And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, most people that come in front of the, the design review committee, they're kind of receptive to listening to ideas and ways to make it look-
Yeah, that would be Kathy's design reviews more.
I think they are, in general. Chris is on the design.
Yeah, they, they're generally good. They, they try their best to adhere to the, the architectural standards. They don't come in with anything that's, and try to, you know, slide something by us, because we don't, we don't let it happen. So they're, they're generally good about it.
And sometimes they come to us even before you guys see it, and, you know, we will make suggestions to try and make it as conforming, or as, look as nice as, as possible. Sometimes minor changes, and, you know, as you guys-
Changes in materials can make a huge difference. To make a, to break up a mass.
Little wider trim, you know?
Yeah, right.
These are tiny things that make a huge difference in, in what a building can look like.
We usually get lots of bites at that apple, so they're in, long before they even start putting pencil to paper, they're in my office, or, or meeting with Kathy and I, or Kathy alone. But before they even get to designer view, we're giving them guidance just to help them, you know, start their process, so. And some of that is open to interpretation.
Creativity to the process, and allows more creativity to be offered.
Architects the ability to do, if they're good architects, to do what they do best.
So you're going to change the word "long" to?
To, to say, rooflines of 50 feet or more. Pitched rooflines of 50 feet or more.
We just want to confirm that that's what it says.
Yeah, make sure that's what's-
Yeah, it's 50 feet for modulations in the design review.
Okay, great. I'm okay with that. It's a little more informative. Clarifying.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. And then the next section has to do with roofline articulation. The bylaw is very specific about what types of rooflines are allowed in the, in the VC1 and VC2, and what are allowed in the VC3 and the VC4. Maybe we want to be not quite so rigid. So that the edits here, instead of saying acceptable, just basically saying roof models in VC1 and 2 may include such styles as gables, gambrels, and I added hip roofs. And, and I'm not sure what, and any jointed configuration of these styles means. It's not a term I'm familiar with. But I think it just means different combinations raised.
When you don't know what else to call it.
Is that like architectural, architectural element?
Kathy, why is it permissive and not "shall"? Why does it say "may include"? Why doesn't it say "shall include"?
You could say "shall," yep.
I think that's, again, sort of sets a baseline. And then they can enhance it if they want to. But baseline, it's gotta include this, a stat with this, and then change it if you-
I mean, I do, I do understand why they were looking at this. I think the VC1 and the VC2 were slightly different, but I could also see, you know, mansards or flat roofs maybe being part of some type of residential apartment building in the VC2. So I, this makes me a little uncomfortable in general of being so specific. And maybe we just want to say roof models in all, and not even get specific, and just say "shall include," and then list all of them.
Yeah, I don't recall that particular part when we were going through the bylaw. Again, there's so much to it, but why would we restrict just to certain kinds of roof styles?
Yeah, the, the identification of each of the, the districts, one, one and two have got one, you know, and three and four have got-
The idea was, I think, to create very distinctive looks in the different districts.
Villages, I see.
But I also think, maybe we just say, "roof models shall include such styles as," and then list them all, and not-
List them all, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yep, and then that way, they're, one through four is, you get your choices, it's like a menu.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like you to make sure that you add the, the comments with regards to flat roofs.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, all of it, one and two would be combined into one note.
Because I don't want to drive down the road and see all flat roofs.
No, I agree.
Kind of hide them, kind of, sort of.
Even if they have a decorative cornice, they're still a flat roof.
Shall have decorative cornices or parapets.
All of that would be included. It would just say, "shall include such styles as gable, gambrels, hip roofs, mansards, and flat roofs. Where flat roofs are proposed, these rooflines shall have," and blah, 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 blah. So we just combine those two and not, not be specific with regard.
In all districts.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Flat roofs on commercial projects and large-scale residential development serve a very valuable purpose for rooftop units, heating units, things like that, so. And having that ability to, to create the decorative cornices or parapets is actually pretty important to those types of projects. So I don't know if you want to, is that what you were referencing, Jim, getting rid of that?
Because some, no, no, have that, because in some cases, they have to put them because of flooding sector. And there, there are other parts of the bylaw that I think suggest that they have to be, air conditioning units, et cetera, have to be hidden. Is there not somewhere in the, in the bylaw? Hiding that type of stuff?
Freestanding electrical structures, HVA structures, or ways shall be fully screened from view.
Right, right. Yeah, so flat roofs, would, they could do it out of a flat roof, as long as it's-
That's under landscape.
They're a flat roof with some kind of a, right, the roof comes up from the street, and then it drops down behind four feet or something, so from the street, you can't see it, because it's, the flat roof is actually kind of-
Pretty sure that's how Yarmouth Commons is. So it'll look like real roofs, but in the middle of it, it's all rubber.
Yeah.
And that's where all their, all their utilities are.
Most commercial buildings, that's where they put them up there.
Yes.
Because floor space is valuable.
I misunderstood what you were asking, that's all.
No, I wanted that.
Okay. So do I.
Okay, so we'll edit that one a little bit. In buffers, there's a, this section really relates to when property abuts a residential zoning district, but it doesn't take into consideration properties such as the Riverwalk Park, that abuts water views where access and views would be desired. And also abuts a river, so you're, the next commercial properties are way far, way far away. So what this is really just suggesting is, and this is typical in, throughout our bylaw, is that if you are budding up against a residential zoning district, you want to see a little bit stricter screening, a little bit denser, to, to kind of screen this commercial development, which we were going to think of as a big commercial development from the, from the residential uses next to it. But what we have in the Riverwalk Park is obviously a park, which is not like a big development. We have a river in between, and then we have a few houses on the other side. So this was just adding something that would allow for an exception. There's already an exception that's allowed for breaks in the buffer for pedestrian bicycle crossing, but maybe we can incorporate into the design to provide for water access or water views in addition to pedestrians. I don't want to have an opaque, completely screened portion of the Riverwalk Park that blocks the river. What's the point of that? Anybody who has property against the river is gonna want to be able to see the river. There's still gonna be a great deal of vegetation, because there's a great deal of vegetation there now.
Doesn't it already say that with other features specifically designed to provide attractive visibility? Or, or no?
I don't know whether, whether-
Or water views.
The way I read it, it already says that. Breaks in the buffer may also be incorporated into the design, where designated pedestrian or bicycle crossings or other features specifically designed to provide attractive visibility. So you can have a break in it if you have a water view.
I would have a hard time approving a, lack of a buffer against the river, the way that it's written today, even with that language that's in there.
So what would we have to do? Build?
Put, put a buffer in, a planted buffer along the property line, which is close to the river, or as close to the river as you can plant.
You're gonna have some of that already, because there's a fairly large vegetated area along the river now. But there's certain areas where, like the kayak launch, where we're gonna want to have access to the, access to the water by kayak launch. We're gonna want to have a path that goes down, and we're gonna want to be able to have some views. And I don't think the park is an intrusive commercial development. And I really think this is probably the only place in the, in the VCOD where this actually happens.
Although, Kathy, it says that it butts residential zoning. The kayak in the area we just talked about, that doesn't abut anything other than municipal property, correct?
It, it abuts the river, and as you get further south, it does turn into R-25 residential on the other side of the river.
On the other side of the river, yeah, okay. But not immediately, what we're talking about with the, that's all our property.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Obviously, we have it along Niagara Lane, and we're gonna fully screen that, no issues whatsoever. But it's just not wanting to have to screen things like your water views, because of this.
So are you interpreting this as mandatory screening, Kathy?
Yes.
It would have to be mandatory. And you don't think the, as Chris said, you don't think the exception is already there, that we could keep it unscreened to a B?
You don't know what other features specifically designed to provide attractive visibility or connections to surrounding neighborhoods are part of the approach to site. We're not trying to, I think this is really to try, create connectivity to a neighbor from your commercial development. So, yeah, let's, let us have a walkway or a bike path that goes from our commercial development to that, to that residential neighborhood. I, I don't think it, I think something needs to be specifically said about water access and water views. How, how you do it, or whether it's a little different than, sure.
Well, you don't want to be able to grant rights of way and easements by right. And if you start saying, "designed to provide water access," I don't want necessarily to give water access. In this case, it's put, this whole discussion is exclusive to the drive-in site. Unless, I just cracked my brain. I can't think of another site within the zone that would, this would affect.
I can't think of another one either.
Lobster boat.
I've just lobster boat.
No, they don't but residential. On the other side, it's, it's.
The whole point of this, again, was to protect residences from this development. So if you're going to develop under the VCOD, we want you to screen, if you're abutting a residential neighborhood behind you, follow this guideline for screening. And you could break it if you want to have a walkway through this so the neighbors don't have to go over here to 28 up that street and come down. They can walk through that buffer.
Right, but if I look at the drive-in development, isn't the Riverwalk development, isn't that a buffer? I mean, look at everything from.
You're gonna, you're not gonna.
Isn't that a buffer?
You're not gonna, here you will, but when you get to here, there's going to be water access.
So under this bylaw, my wonderful building commissioner is going to say, you got to plant some stuff along that.
Along the river? But that's not adjacent to a residential zone. It's adjacent to a river.
The river is, I believe, a residential zone.
I don't, I don't see that that's, I don't, that was not the intent. It's when you're, it's land. It's not the water. It's when you have a residential zone. Nobody's going to build on the water. Put a house on the water.
Right.
How wide is the river, if you don't mind me asking? I'm sorry? How wide is the river?
60, 80, depends.
Depends on where you're at.
Yeah.
What's in between this project and the property across the river?
The river.
Probably eight.
Nothing. That's my point.
It's a little wider as you get down to where the.
Across it is, is the Skippy's Marina.
Which is not, which is not an issue.
Right.
This is, this is business zone. So it's really where from.
The residents start at the end there.
Yeah.
I think this section of the, that Kathy, this section gives you guys as a site plan review the authority to say, oh, yeah, you don't need to put trees here. So where I would say, it doesn't look like enough trees to me, but the planning board will make the final say. You know, that's, that's how I read that. Because you guys are the site plan review, the official site plan review committee.
But, but in, in this case, the, the Riverwalk, it seems to me, is not within 20 feet of a residentially zoned area. The river's got to be at least 20 feet wide there.
Oh, yeah. Twice that.
I mean, it does neck down a little bit, but so you, the 20 feet are provided by the, by the river.
The, the river, I mean, you have to pick, pick a location, and I guess I'll have to look more closely in this. Right now, our commercial goes to the edge of our property, that VCOD, and then from that edge of the property, including the river, is residential. I know that we changed last, I meant to look at that. I know the, at the, I think the last town meeting, we changed how you would define the boundary on the, on the, on the zoning map. And I have to look and see how we said we would do it with regard to rivers. Because that might be.
Well, it may be that the town owns the river as a, as a waterway. I mean, think of the town line in Bass River. It's right up the middle of the river. So Yarmouth Town property, if you will, runs right up the, so maybe we own the river. And our property line then ends on the east side of the river.
And we're budding our own property.
Let, let me look at how we defined the boundaries in the last edits we made and see whether, how we defined where the.
I mean, if we don't have to make a change, I think we're, we're all agreeing. If we don't have to make a change, let's not make one. But if you need one, we need one. Because let's do it.
What are we trying to solve here? What is?
Madam Chair, if I may, I can answer that question and I can, so commercial or, or non-residential uses next to residential properties, in this case, it's just wide open. It might as well be an open field. The abutters love to call my office. So the buffer requirements are there, no matter where they're located, the buffer requirements are there to protect the neighbors from the noise, from the headlights, from any, anything that goes on, on that other property. So if you have just a river there, then in my opinion, I would say, no, you're not complying with the bylaw because you have no plantings. You're going to the Board of Appeals unless the planning board decides that you don't need relief for that. So that's how I would do that, sitting in my office. I get those phone calls every single day. So I think the buffers are not to block views. I think that the, the, the buffers are there to protect, protect the neighbors, the rest, because you're, all of Route 28 is B2, HMOD, VCOD, and right behind that is residential use. And there's no place in town where, well, maybe in the B3 in some places. But anywhere that we have real heavy commercial use, there's residential district directly abutting that.
Okay.
So that's the point I'm trying.
Yes.
Couple of quick questions. You said commercial, but that property is recreational. Is there?
Is it residential?
No, the, the drive-in site is recreational.
Understood, but is it residential?
It's center overlay district. He's talking about the business districts, the versus residential district.
No, I'm just talking about the drive-in site.
I understand. That's, I think, but it's not residential. So people aren't sleeping at night there. It's, it's not residential.
Okay, so it's other than residential is what you're saying.
That's how I use, that's how I try to apply logic to the book.
Okay, so it's not commercial. It's other than residential.
Right. And there could be commercial uses there. You could have concerts there. You could have, you know, fairs. You could have carnivals. And that's not residential, clearly.
And speaking as the, the chairman of the Drive-In Site Committee, we want to make sure that our neighbors are happy. So if this is something that's going to be beneficial to both Mark and his discussions, and the community as a whole, I, as the chair of the Drive-In Site Committee, am wholly in favor of it.
Very good, Jim.
I want happy neighbors.
I think there's a ton of screening that's there now. We're just not going to be able to guarantee we have that opaque for the entire length. And we don't want the opaque.
Sounds like an insurance policy a little bit.
It, it's just so that we don't have concerns, and we don't want to have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Because they, they may say, the bylaw says this, and why are you so special?
Which is, yeah, it's counterproductive to what we're trying to achieve there. The whole view thing is.
Right.
Does Will have, I see Will is, I think he had his mouth open and shut it.
So the next one is just, I'm not really, and again, I, maybe Chris has a better recollection. Has to do with signage and freestanding signs. It says freestanding single pole or lollipop signs are not allowed. Great. We don't want that anyway. But then it says freestanding monument or structured signs are only allowed in VC2, 3, and 4. I, I assume what they mean by monument is like, you know, maybe something with a giant, like a little planter around it or something that's more substantial than, than just the typical signs that we see. But the Riverwalk Park is in the VC1, and we want to have a little bit more than just a, a simple sign. We might want to have something that has something, yeah, that has something interesting, an nautical related, or something along those lines. So I was just suggesting we just strike that whole sentence. I really don't know what it, what it meant and why it was in there and why the VC1 was, was excluded.
Signs, signs, signs. Get Bobby Boys back on the phone.
Have to do with the, the idea of signs not being signs, ice cream cones and.
Yeah, symbolic things, as opposed to.
Other things that were not signs, but.
The only thing I could think of is VC1 is really meant to create that downtown feel. And each business doesn't have their own sign in a downtown. But these are, you're still allowed a sign. It goes on to say, you're still allowed a sign. You're just not allowed a monument sign. So I don't know even what a monument sign really means and how it differs from our, from our sign by law at all. I just like.
Wouldn't we want to be able to have some sign consistency? Like, the Pockets Landing sign is a terrific sign. You know, it's, I, I would think that for our own properties, we'd want to have some consistency.
The biggest, probably the biggest thing that marks the property is sign code violation.
Half of this is just not to run a foul of Mark. We don't want to run a foul of Mark.
To like, you know, we've been talking at the Drive-In Site Committee about public art. Is public art a monument? So it's like a, for example, I was just up in the Winnipeg area, and they had a statue park, which was pretty darn cool, actually. But are those monuments? And then can we not?
It's not a sign. Mine, mine, it would be a statue.
There is, I'm looking for it, actually. There are, unlettered sculptures are defined in our sign code.
I also think there's an issue of permanency, Jim. I think a monument is more permanent, like, much more. Public art can be taken up or down.
Monuments used to be permanent until the last five years. Not anymore.
You're right. But, but, but there is an issue of permanency. And I also think the issue of public art, stuff you can take down, like they have something seasonal, take it down. Next summer, have something different. I believe that's one of the distinctions, but I don't know if that's the only distinction.
If murals or public art are not specifically provided for in the bylaw, they are prohibited. I'm not, we've had companies that wanted to put a mural on their building. They happened to sell seafood. They wanted to do a mural of a lobster. I'm sorry, but that is directly related to your business, in my opinion. You have the right to come to the Board of Appeals to appeal it. So, you know, I'm, I've been pressed a lot about, you know, that, and I think that we're going to talk about it probably for the Springtown meeting, maybe. Yes.
We need a whole town public art policy, which we don't have.
Don't have, right.
So there, there's a lot of work that needs to happen on, on public art. You know, and, and public art on municipal property might be viewed differently than our, on someone else's property that might be viewed as some type of sign or extension of their business, which we don't necessarily want. Too much of that, but something that we need to work on.
Something to work on later, because we don't have anything else to do.
Can I just ask one question, Kathy? What is that phrase, contribute to the functionality of pedestrian features? What does that mean? The very last.
What, which line are we on?
The very last line, we're still on signage, the very last line, "The base or support elements of freestanding signs shall be integrated with the surrounding environment, contribute to the functionality of pedestrian features, and incorporate ornamental landscaping where possible." What does that mean? Contribute to the functionality of pedestrian features? It's the very last, I don't know. If we don't know what, I, I would drop it, because I don't even know what it means. And it could be, I don't even know what it means. We don't want anything that's contributing. We don't know what they're contributing to. Although that may have had some meaning a while ago. I don't know what it means now, though, do you?
The base or support elements or freestanding signs shall be integrated with the surrounding environment.
Right. Contribute to the functionality of pedestrian features. I don't know what that means. I'm sure it had a meaning at some point.
Yeah, so you just didn't have the telephone pole kind of thing sticking into the ground.
Oh, I see.
A lollipop sign.
So you'd want to have maybe a, a brick wall with some bluestone on the top and a pole coming up out of that so you can sit on that bluestone wall. That's part of the public.
I see what you're asking.
That's a good point. Okay, then leave it in. Leave it in. That makes some sense.
Sitting wall around it.
Yep, yep. Okay, that's good.
You have a good memory. And then the last one kind of gets back to dimensional relief. And this kind of came out of the, the Irish Village. We're very specific on the type of dimensional, or the type of relief that's allowed to be given through a special permit and what requires a variance. And maybe we want to switch that up a little bit, saying the Special Permit Granting Authority, which is the zoning board of appeals for the VCOD, can provide relief through a special permit and kind of say, for everything, except, and list the things that you think would need to be a variance. The only thing that we had specifically outlined before was, was the building height. Because I think we, you know, we kind of sold this at town meeting that we weren't going to go any higher. So I think that really should be a variance. And what we had before was the maximum front yard setback, because we had set that saying, you know, that's what we really want. We don't want people to continually going back. We want to pull the buildings up closer to the road. So the way it's written now is like, you know, any relief can be given through a special permit except for relief from building height or maximum front yard setback, which would require a variance. So this, again, gives more flexibility. And I think this probably would have, would have helped the Irish Village, and it would all have been special permit versus a variance. As you all know, variance is much, it's harder for the zoning board of appeals to grant. Even if they want to grant it, they're very reticent and very hesitant to do so.
Because you're waving war.
Yeah, yeah. And you really have to have a real special consideration and reason to, to do it. Why are you so unique?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Any, any comments on this one? I, I'm, I'm okay with it as well.
Okay.
Is this something that the town council would have to check to see if this is additional authority given to the ZBA?
Oh, I, I think the ZBA is fine, because you're just kind of saying what would require a variance and what would be a special permit. It's only you guys in your quasi VCOD site plan reviewers, which is not a special permit.
Right.
Whether you can waive some things without having to send them to the special. Worst case scenario, this would say, even if you can't meet it all, it's a special permit, not a variance, which is a huge change unto itself benefit. But if, if you guys can do it, without them having to go to another board, who's going to have, you know, five other people with different opinions on things, developers would appreciate that.
And Kathy, can I just clarify? With special permits also, we can put conditioners on them, can't we?
Yes.
Yep. So that helps also with the.
Yeah, the, the, the ZBA regularly will put special permit conditions on there. Okay. Well, I think I got my marching orders, and I'll try and work that up for the, for the next meeting. Just to talk a little bit about schedule, I don't think we're going to have a lot of time. I don't think these, if you actually, the article's not going to be that, that long. Once you, once you look at it, it's just, you know, the explanation, I'll kind of, will take a little bit of time. But I'd like to try and get some type of decision from the board on the next meeting on the 7th, because I'm going to need to advertise the public hearing, hopefully for October 10th. I'm sorry, October 5th? So I'd like, so in order to do that advertisement, I need to have a general idea of what we're doing. It doesn't mean we're not tweaking it after we hear public hearing comments and that type of thing, or that you still have another shot. But then we need to go to the Board of Selectment on the 18th.
Of October?
Yep. And then I'm hoping to see if we can have that summit on the 19th of October. I've sent out some emails, inquiries to staff on their availability, to talk about how, how short-term rentals went and, and employees at motels.
What are you, what are you thinking of that, Kathy?
The 19th of October.
Very next day.
Yeah. Worst case scenario, I mean, I know that everyone really wanted to get Frank's, Frank Fredrickson's input on, on how everything went. I think Kevin Lennon's also very, very capable, and, and I'm not sure if they, did they make a decision last night? Was it Kevin?
Yep.
Awesome. He's very capable and can readily fill in Frank's shoes, and that's a real asset for our community. So it, worst case scenario, if we have to have it on the 5th, we would just have that summit after, which wouldn't be a bad thing, because then the public would come, be coming for one or the other and hear both.
Right. But there's nothing that's coming out of the summit that we have to roll into the town meeting. This is just.
This would be if we wanted to make any changes next year. Yeah.
So if we had to, we could push that to November if we really had to. This is not, that's not time sensitive right now, is it?
The only time sensitive thing is, I understand, I believe Frank is retiring before Halloween. So if we wanted Frank to come, it would have to be in October.
Okay.
But, but you're right. I mean, other than that, there really isn't.
Okay, so going to have a busy September and October. Meeting minutes is next on our agenda. They have a motion to accept the minutes of our August 3rd, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call. Susan Britta?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chris Vincent?
Abstain.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
Any committee updates? That, any committee meetings? Yes, Will?
Yeah, hi. The school building committee met on August 4th. Everything is still tracking very nicely for students to be in in January at the Intermediate Middle School. And also, as you probably know, the, the new traffic light is going in at Station Avenue Elementary, I believe, at the end of this week.
Oh, it's in.
I mean, it's in. I don't know if it's turned, I don't know officially when it goes live.
The 20th?
Yeah. So there's that. And then Library Planning Committee is going to meet with Assistant Town Administrator Bill Scott in a couple of weeks to talk about the next phase of its process, specifically a community needs assessment. Sort of that phase of where we are with the libraries. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Any, anyone else? I have a report out from the Water Resources Advisory Committee yesterday, no, Monday. We had a meeting with both of our consultants, CDM Smith and Pierce. I'm going to get right. I'm going to get right Pierce. Who gave us updates, OPM update, and then a design update on the Water Resource Recovery Facility and the collection system. At our last meeting, I mentioned we had gone on a site visit to see two different types of technology that would be used at the Water Resources Recovery Facility. So we went to Kingston and we went to Cohasset. One is called a sequencing batch reactor, which is essentially a very large pool where the influent comes in and is treated sequentially, aerated, cleaned up. And then the effluent is, comes out, and it's cleaner water than when it came in. And it all happens in one big tank. And the plan for the town is with this type of facility that we would have four of these, four of these tanks, if you will. Primarily, we need to kind of gross up the number of tanks we have because of the seasonal demands on, we're expecting seasonal demands to be much higher during the, you know, the peak three, four, or five months of the summer. And having the extra tanks also gives us the capacity to shut them down. You can just turn, you can just drain them, provide preventive maintenance, get at them. You can take them offline, save utility costs. But when we need them during the summer and the peak months, they could all be fully charged and working. So we went to see a Kingston, a plant in Kingston, where we could actually see the tanks, because two were brand-new, under construction. So you could see the whole setup. It was, actually, it's a very simple process of aeration, some chemical treatment. And then there is, my favorite, my favorite part of it was the decanter. Sits on top, floats on top of the tank, and it literally decants all of the, all of the good water and obviously the waste. It's a gravity-based system, settles to the bottom. The other alternative we viewed and we decided not to go with, based on our own observations and the recommendations of our consultants, is called a membrane bioreactor, where it isn't sequential. The water, the wastewater goes through several treatment tanks. And essentially, this membrane, if you can think of it as long strands of spaghetti, and they literally are that thin. And these membranes are aerated, and the waste is sucked through these membranes. And it's a filtering, cleaning process that's very different, where it is not a single tank where everything happens. There's this segment here where the wastewater is treated. Then it goes and has some additional treatment with these membranes. And then it goes to a separate sludge remover. It was an interesting, it was an interesting visit, for sure. It happened to be in Cohasset. And the odor wasn't as bad as I expected, actually. So anyway, the bottom line is the Water Resources Advisory Committee joined in with the recommendation that the consultants will be making to the Board of Selectmen on this particular design for the wastewater treatment facility. And they needed that decision pretty imminently.
How does these designs compare to the one that's in Barstool downtown Hyatt? Well, not downtown Hyatt, by the mall.
That's, that is a sequencing batch. Yeah, there's only two real, real, the membrane one, there's another one. We went to Cohasset to see. There is another, consultants mentioned one other one, Kathy, today. They designed a membrane, I thought C.D. Smith, one of the fellows talked about, yeah. There may be, there's another one off, but I'm pretty sure the Barstool one is a sequencing batch. It's the tank.
Quite often lately.
They've got a big aerator that, you know, moves it around, keeps aerating the water.
In terms of capacity, that's the best, tanks. I was under the impression that the membrane one does, at some point, have limited capacity for smaller...
Oh, yeah. I mean, you have to control, you have to control the influent. It has only so much capacity.
Are they on schedule? Are they still pretty much on schedule?
The schedule that they've, that they described to us was one that they would put an adjective as aggressive and ambitious. But it's with the various, they've laid out a plan that Phase 1 would have six individual contracts. And these contracts, the first contract, of course, would be on Buck Island for the wastewater treatment facility. And then sequencing along 28. And they think that can all be done between 2023 and 2025.
Is Phase 1 still part of West Yarmouth that's going to be attached to Barstool? Are we still part of that? No, we're all now going to be in...
All of Phase 1 is going to the treatment facility in Yarmouth.
So that's moving, that is, that is moving along. The second important piece of this is that the committee is planning to have outreach sessions with various members of the community, go through the eight phases of the project, and start to get the public back into the conversation so that we can bring back to the Board of Selectmen the reactions, the thoughts, the thinking of the townspeople. That's one of the mission of the Water Resources Advisory Committee, is to be a listener and to get out there and get a feel for what the community... So we've got four, temporary, we've got, we've got four meetings that we're scheduling in the various areas of town for the public, yeah. And outreach, too. Various neighborhood groups.
You know, first go around.
Oh, yeah, they were terrific, yeah.
They really did a terrific job.
And we're hoping we can...
Pictures and information, they were just very, very good.
So bring everybody up to date as to where we are now, so.
That'd be awesome.
That's all, that's, I think that was the only committee meeting I attended, Kathy. Did I attend any others with you?
You've been to, you are our go-to fill-in for any committee at any time.
Have you been covering CEDC?
Yeah, well, that's my, that is my assignment. It's my assignment.
Did the CEDC have a site visit to a cannabis store?
Yes, they did. I didn't make that meeting. I believe it was on, was it July? I don't remember, it was July.
I was out of town, but last couple of weeks, so.
July.
Eastham, is it in Eastham?
Eastham, informational.
Yeah, they did.
Guess I've done some research on it, okay.
I did provide Kyle with the information that had been developed by the planning board from back in 2018, when we weren't sure which way the vote was going to go. So he has that information.
Can I ask a general question?
Sure.
Why is this back on the adrenaline? The whole marijuana thing?
I, from my meetings with the CEDC, the business community is interested in...
Which business community?
Well, through the chamber and others. Generally, the members of the committee are interested in this as a business opportunity that they would like to reconsider. So it's coming from the committee members and some outreach to the business community as to this as being a business opportunity that's not available in Yarmouth.
There are people in the community, including myself, that are interested in the subject. I've done a lot of research.
It's changed from the vote that was taken two years ago.
What's changed?
Nothing.
But I mean, what in terms of information? Because my understanding is, it was voted on what two years ago was overwhelmingly defeated. So what new information is available? That would lead this committee to think that the residents are going to change their mind.
Because of the, I'll speak for the committee.
Actually, the business opportunity was clearly presented several years ago.
Better sativa, maybe.
Without any experience.
Oh, no, there was plenty of experience. They had plenty of data two years ago.
Well, I don't know how many recreational marijuana shops were open and operating on Cape Cod.
But maybe not on Cape Cod, but, well, anyway.
Anyway, so I think what's happened is that there are several towns and several locations where business opportunities have created a fairly significant, my, my words, revenue stream for the towns. And so they are looking at it as a revenue stream for the town, and the business community is looking at it as a business opportunity that they would like to pursue.
And I think, Joanne said it perfectly, but I think what's changed? In my opinion, I think a lot of things have changed. The influx of fentanyl into our communities, this contaminated drugs that are out there, the advanced research in the benefits of medical cannabis, and the actual practice that we've now seen, that the fear-mongering that we've heard before, people going to be shooting each other in the streets because they're trying to buy cannabis, hasn't materialized. It's a very benign business model. And I personally have, because I've been curious about this whole thing when we said no, the income that towns are making in the revenue is crazy money.
And I will tell you, Jim, it's vastly overstated.
Well, I don't know, I've been doing some research. I get some pretty strong data this, otherwise. So what I have done is I've actually gone to all of these places and actually sat out in their parking lots and watched and see, okay, what goes on here? I would suggest we have a greater criminal element at our local liquor stores than any of the cannabis stores they meant to. So that's what they're looking at.
We'll shut down the liquor store and open up.
So that's what they're looking at, is the way you move forward.
What I would like to say is that the CEDC is looking at this, and they are trying to gather as much information by visiting sites, by gathering data, whether or not they come through with any kind of a recommendation or a report. I have not, I'm not aware that that's exactly what the outcome is expected here.
That's what they want to do. Make a recommendation one way or the other to the Selectmen as to whether, I thought that's what I heard your chair say. They want to make...
I think we're, my knowledge of it, and I did miss the road trip, is they're investigating the pros and cons of this, and whether or not the timing is right for the town to reconsider the decision at, made a town meeting three years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think they're thinking they would be remiss if they didn't look at this as a business opportunity and a revenue, tax revenue opportunity for the town.
If they're looking for revenue opportunities, why aren't they investigating abortion clinics?
Good lord. Oh, you have to ask them.
I'd like to get back, I'd like to get back to the agenda. I'd like to get back to the agenda. Any other committee updates? Any board member items? Kathy, one piece of correspondence you had sent out to us. You'd asked us to look, where is it now? It was the note from Donald Almonte? Did you want to talk at all about that, or what?
I guess what I would say is this is the case of, you know, one of those cases south of 28 where it's a relatively small lot. It had a small little cottage on it, and they are replacing it with a four-bedroom home. They need to fill a little bit, because they are in a flood zone, and they're required to if they're going to raise and replace. And there's just some concerns, I think, from him in the neighborhood about changing the flavor of these small little cottage lots and making these much larger houses that kind of sit up high, and whether there's something that the planning board would be willing to do about it. He left me a message, I haven't gotten back to him. But, you know, I don't know whether it necessarily was a McMansion, but when you have like a small 5,000-square-foot lot, you know...
It looks big.
It looks big, and it feels big. And I guess they have a high groundwater table in that area, and he's concerned about that.
Yeah, they talked about displacement and raising the water table. I mean, does that, does that happen?
It does not raise the water table.
I know, yeah.
A house will not raise the water table one bit.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
That's not possible.
The only thing I could think of is that there might actually be, I guess there was another house that was done similar in the neighborhood that has caused problems with runoff. I don't know whether it was a case where they didn't properly address the roof runoff or the driveway runoff on their site. The plan that I saw for the properties talking about did have dry wells. But the groundwater table's very, very high. So you're not going to be able to infiltrate as much. So there are some concerns. I'm not sure whether it's all planning board or something else to be taken into account.
All right, well, you'll keep us posted as to whether or not you want us to do anything or start thinking about anything with regard to this.
Issue of aesthetics, I think, is going to come up more and more as these neighborhoods that do have these small sort of Cape Cod cottages. And the value of these places is skyrocketing, and people wanting to build a bigger home. And changing how, changing how the neighborhood, I think it's going to be more, we're going to hear more and more of that.
FEMA regulations really kick in. So you can't, for example, you can't improve a house more than 50% of the value of the building if it's within a flood zone. Or Plan B, raise it outside the flood zone. So in many cases, their options are...
Limited to begin with.
What are they, what are they going to do? So often they do the 50%, and then they come back a few years later for 50% more.
FEMA wants you to redevelop them, because they would rather have a strong building that doesn't collapse, that the insurance doesn't have to pay out. So that's the whole reason for that. They don't want you to sink money into a structure that's going to get trashed. And then FEMA goes bankrupt.
And place that are going to prohibit, right, people from raising, because they're going to have, they have to...
I don't think it's necessarily raising, but, you know, if you have a certain-sized lot, how big can, are you going to, and you bought a cottage, and that's what you have, how big are you allowed to go? And then do we want to be dictating to people what they can do on their house? We already dictate, you know, setbacks and building lot coverage.
It's already in the, so just because you're redeveloping in FEMA doesn't mean you can now make it as big as you want. You're still going to stick to the dimensional requirements of the table. This is just strictly heights. And I've built several homes over those last couple of years in flood zones. And the surrounding neighbors have older homes that are lower to the ground. The one I just recently built is 13 feet in the air, because that's where the flood level is. So when the flood comes, my homeowner's going to be sitting down, drinking their coffee, looking at the rooftops of the other flooded homes. In the meantime, they do look down, if somebody's got an outdoor shower, they're going to have to put a roof on their outdoor shower if they don't want to give the neighbors a show. So that's, that's the only problem that I see. You're going to have a taller home, but that's the one that's going to be standing when the hurricane hits.
So Kathy, these are types of things we want to start thinking about with sewerin coming into these areas, allowing... Because right now, we're restricting, say, that two-bedroom cottage can't be developed anymore because of septic restrictions. Now we're going to put a pipe down the middle of the road that says, "You don't have a septic restriction anymore."
Exactly.
So we're going to have to start looking at these neighborhoods and deciding what...
That's going to be determined by the land use control regulations, which was also talked out at the rack, about initially having... The consultant provided a draft that was, or an actual plans that were done in Harwich. Staff's going to look at that and see how we might amend that and then bring it to the rack for them to review. But it's like, we have a certain amount of new growth. We have to limit, limit the amount of growth for our state revolving fund loan application. So we need these land use controls. So how are we going to dole that out? What's the mechanism for doling that out?
So are those going to be things that this board would be looking at?
No, it would be the Board of Selectmen, it's the sewer commissioners, who would be the ultimate decider. They may delegate certain things to staff.
So they could actually dictate, yeah, you can add a bedroom, or no, you can't add a bedroom?
I think that's all stuff that needs to be determined. The analysis that we did for the build-out is we, in the residential areas, we just assumed 1,000 new bedrooms. We had to come up with some estimate of what the, a reasonable amount of growth would be. So that's, that's the other thing, is like, we want a reasonable amount of growth. We don't want everyone to have a five-bedroom home all of a sudden, have these huge McMansions on these tiny lots. So those regulations kind of go hand in hand.
Okay. Any other, any other committee comments? All right. Our next meeting will be in two weeks, no, three weeks. Yeah, September 7th, and we'll have the continuation of the public hearing. Is on still, Kathy?
Yep, I think that they are feeling solid with their redesign for the Davenport subdivision. So I would anticipate that it would be a case of them coming in and asking to withdraw without prejudice their current proposal, and then them start moving forward with the restarting, with the preliminary site plan review, and then come back with a definitive and the cluster subdivision special.
Okay. Anything else? They have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Absolutely.
Chris Vincent?
Aye.
Susan Britta?
Joanne Crowley? Aye. Thank you all.